A regular meeting of the Council is held in Bruce, Thursday, November 14th, 2024, at 7:00 PM for the purpose of transacting any and all business. Notice this meeting was posted on November 2024 at 3:26 PM. This meeting is being recorded and is live on SATV and Zoom unless technological issues interrupt the transmission. Counselors absent, none. Counselor President Hapworth presided. Counselor Varela moved to dispense with the reading of the previous record. All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. President Hapworth requests that everyone please rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Prozinski.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic of our states, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Salem City Council honors this land as Namkeg, or fishing place, where generations of Namkeg people from the Pawtucket Band of the Massachusetts Tribe lived and passed through for centuries. We acknowledge this as unceded indigenous land and also acknowledge the Massachusetts Tribe will continue to honor and hold this land into the present. Salem City Council is committed to having ongoing, meaningful dialogue with indigenous peoples who have presence in Salem in order to dismantle legacies of oppression and inequities that persist today. Public testimony. Public testimony is not to exceed 15 minutes. Public testimony is not a public hearing or question and answer, period. Signing must occur 30 minutes prior to the meeting. The president shall, depending on the number of speakers, set a time limit not to exceed three minutes, which each individual presenting testimony must abide. We have one individual signed up today, so that individual has three full minutes, and that is Chris Malmstrom.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for having me here today. I want to take a couple of minutes just to comment on the resolution that will be passed later today and the decision by the Council to not address our Congressman Seth Moulton by name and his hateful comments over the last week directly. I think it is a mistake for this Council to do that. As a member of the LGBTQ community myself, someone who has grown up as the subject of this debate time and time again, who has grown up in a conservative Catholic household that told him that he did not have a right to exist, I think to balk at the idea of continuing to call out our Congressman when he is engaging in such hateful and incorrect rhetoric is a failure on our part and abdication of our leadership here as a city. We have had strong comments from both the Salem School Committee, our mayor, and I said both, but three people, our State Representative Manny Cruz. For our City Council to not do the same would undercut those statements that have been previously made and give the impression to both the Congressman and the public that the Council thinks that maybe the Congressman is kind of right, and maybe we shouldn't address this, and maybe those people who commented previously were doing it a little jumping the gun. And I think that is the wrong message to send. I think that is an incorrect message to send. I think that is a message that is then sent to the members of our LGBTQ+ community, particularly our trans members, the trans children of our community, that they are not fully and adequately supported by this Council, that they do not have a Council that is willing to stand up and say, "We will not stand when our Congressman, the person who is the federal representative of this city and this district, continues over a week-long media campaign to continue to slur hate at this community." It's disgusting. It's wrong, and we need to say something about it. Thank you all.
Thank you. Hearings.
We've ordered by, um, from Comcast to install conduits on Hawthorne Boulevard for service at 13 Hawthorne Boulevard.
Any appearing in favor, please make your way to the podium.
Good evening. Dave Walling, Comcast, 9 Forbes Road, Woburn, Massachusetts. Would like to speak in favor of the Comcast petition to place 461 feet of conduit to provide the service to number 13 Hawthorne Boulevard.
Any questions from the Council? Counselor Jerslow.
Thank you, President Hapworth. Thank you. I just got a question. I notes for the St. Mary's School that they're rehabbing, correct?
Yes.
There's a driveway right at 11 Hawthorne Boulevard that is literally right on the line, the property line. Are you going to be interfering at all with that driveway at 11? Excuse me.
If we are, we will work around it and work with that property owner to, um, you know, work with them, whatever the case may be. Um... Oh, I'm sorry. We'll work with the property owner around that, that, that address.
In your plans, it stated you were putting a manhole cover. Will you be putting a manhole cover like right in the middle of the driveway?
We, we tend not to put them in the middle of driveways. We can adjust that either way to take it out of the driveway because it becomes a problem when we have to access that manhole. So, yes, we can adjust that either way. That's not an issue.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Any other questions? Anybody else appearing in favor on Zoom, please raise your hand, and we will allow you to speak. Seeing none, anyone appearing in opposition in person, please make your way to the podium. Seeing none, anyone on Zoom appearing in opposition, please raise your hand and we'll allow you to speak. Counselor Jerslow.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move to close the public hearing.
Counselor Jerslow moves to close the public hearing. All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Counselor Jerslow.
I move that this be granted.
Counselor Jerslow moves this be granted. Any discussion?
No discussion.
Counselor Jerslow moves to be granted. All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Thank you. Further hearings.
We have the request from Attorney Joseph Corenti for the discontinuance of India Street.
Anyone in person appearing in favor, please make your way to the podium.
John Berry, Crowley Wind Services, 67 Derby Street, Salem.
Any questions for Mr. Berry? Seeing none. Counselor Jerslow.
Thank you. Um, I know we've been working, the planning department's been working with you and Crowley since 2023 on this project, and they've vetted it very well, and I've seen the plans that you want to do, and I think there's no problem with it.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Berry? We also have Attorney Corenti via Zoom, who has his hand raised, if you want to allow him to speak more in.
Try again, Counselor Corenti. One more time, Joe. Go ahead.
Great. Thank you, Joseph Corenti, 70 Washington Street. Uh, representing, um, the Crowley interest in the land. Are you hearing me okay?
Yep, we can hear you.
Great, thank you. Um, and, um, just wanted to say that we followed this petition, um, uh, with the city solicitor, brought it, um, uh, into the Council. It's city land, uh, it's India Street, and the city is the only abutter to the land. So, um, this is, this is something that we've been working closely with, as Counselor Jerslow just stated. Um, all of the plans that have been filed, uh, and approved by the Planning Board and all the other agencies show this street as being discontinued. Um, this is essential for, uh, the use of the Marshaling Yard to have, uh, this, this land, uh, which is the, the, the street that is essentially a paper street, although there is some pavement on it. So, we appreciate your consideration here so we can continue to move this, um, project forward.
Any questions for Mr. Corenti? Seeing none? Anyone else appearing in favor via Zoom, please raise your hand and allow you to speak. Seeing none? Anyone appearing in opposition in person or via Zoom, please raise your hand and allow you to speak. Seeing none. Counselor Jerslow.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move to close the public hearing.
Counselor Jerslow moves to close the public hearing. All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Counselor Jerslow.
I move that this be granted.
Counselor Jerslow moves to be granted. All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Thank you. Reappointments and reappointments.
We have held from the last meeting the mayor's appointment of Kevin Jordan of 19 Gardner Street to the Bicycling and Shared Path Advisory Committee with a term to expire February 27th, 2026.
Counselor Cohen.
Uh, thank you, President Hapworth. I move that, uh, is confirmed by roll call vote.
Counselor Cohen moves for confirmation by roll call vote. Any discussion?
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, I had a nice chat with Kevin, who has not lived in Salem that long. He came from Cambridge. He's an avid cyclist, uh, and he's already reached out to some of the advocacy groups like SWAG, and I expect he's going to do a great job.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. On the confirm, on the motion for confirmation by roll call vote, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Harvey?
Yes.
Counselor Jerslow?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor Mercilow?
Yes.
Counselor Prozinski?
Yes.
Counselor Stark?
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
Counselor Watsonfelt?
Yes.
And Counselor Hapworth?
Yes.
Mayor's appointment of Kevin Jordan to the Bicycling and Shared Path Advisory Committee. We have 11 counselors voting, 11 in favor, none opposed, matter carries. Mr. Jordan. Counselor Cohen, would you like to suspend the rules?
I move that we suspend the rules so Mr. Jordan can come and speak to the Council.
Counselor Cohen moves to suspend the rules. Seeing no objection. Mr. Jordan.
Um, yes, thank you. Um, I just have a short introduction I'd like to give. Uh, my name's Kevin Jordan. Uh, yeah, uh, as Jeff said, I'm a pretty avid cyclist around here. I'm admittedly a relatively new resident to Salem, and one of the reasons I bought a home here is because of the backability of the city. I'm a strong believer and user of multi, multi-modal transportation, which means I get around by walking, cycling, driving, and using public transit. Uh, so I'm really, uh, looking forward to playing a part in improving transportation in Salem for all road users, and I strongly believe that, uh, an equitable transit system is a key to successful city planning, and I thank you for the opportunity to be on the committee.
Thank you. Further appointments and reappointments.
With the mayor's appointment of John Inkowitz to the position of Director of Technology and Innovation effective on September 16th, 2024, with a term to expire on September 15th, 2026.
Counselor Varela.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move that's be held under the rules.
Counselor Varela moves to be held under the rules. All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further appointments and reappointments.
With the mayor's appointment of Zachary Calderon of 21 Capes Street to the Sustainability, Energy, and Resilience Committee with a term to expire July 14th, 2025.
Counselor Cohen.
Uh, thank you, President Hapworth. Although I wish that Mr. Calderon was serving today, I move that this is held under the rules.
Counselor Cohen moves to be held under the rules. All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further appointments and reappointments.
We have the mayor's appointment of Amy Brooks of 181 North Street to the Cultural Council with a term to expire April 13th, 2026.
Counselor Stark.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that this be received and filed.
Counselor Stark moves to be received and filed. All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Appointments and further appointments and reappointments.
With the mayor's reappointment of the following seven people with a term set forth below.
Counselor Varela.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move that's be held under the rules.
Counselor Varela moves to be held under the rules. All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Communications from the mayor.
We've ordered that as authorized by City Council vote on June 13th, 2024 pursuant to Master of Law, Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a half, for the establishment of the revolving funds for fiscal year 2025, the Utility Energy Credit Revolving Fund is hereby amended as detailed below.
Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move for suspension of the rules.
Counselor Merkel moves for suspension of the rules. Seeing no objection. Counselor Merkel.
Uh, thank you. I move for adoption.
Counselor Merkel moves for adoption. Under discussion.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I spoke with Anna Friedman, our Finance Director, about this, and, uh, there is also information from Neil Duffy, our Director of Sustainability and Resiliency Department, and Mayor Pangallo in the backup documentation. And this is to amend the Utility Energy Credit Revolving Fund, making an increase in the spending cap, uh, from $400,000 to $1,250,000. And this is necessary to cover $900,000 in pre-approved national grid incentives, which is a good thing. Uh, the overall cost for these projects to the city has not changed. Uh, these, um, this fund is to pay for work, uh, that is getting reimbursed, uh, in incentives. And to these projects, uh, just to refresh everyone's memory, they're mostly for the schools and also fire department and library and other, other, other projects as well.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. On the motion for adoption, all those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further communications from the mayor.
We've ordered that the sum of $5,625 be approved within the Retirement Stabilization Fund Vacation Sick Leave Buyback Account to be expended for the contractual buyback for a school department employee.
Counselor Merkel.
Uh, thank you, President Hapworth. I move for suspension of the rules.
Counselor Merkel moves for suspension of the rules. Seeing objection. Counselor Merkel.
Uh, thank you. I move for adoption.
Counselor Merkel moves for adoption. Under discussion.
Uh, this is a contractual obligation, and we thank Ms. Brand Conner for her service to the schools.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. On the motion for adoption, all those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further communications from the mayor.
We've ordered that the sum of $2,574.12 be approved within Retirement Stabilization Fund Vacation Sick Leave Buyback Account to be expended for the contractual agreement payments that impact retired employees listed in the Salem Patrol Police Union.
Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move for suspension of the rules.
Counselor Merkel moves for suspension of the rules. Seeing no objection. Counselor Merkel.
Uh, thank you. I move for adoption.
Counselor Merkel moves for adoption. Under discussion.
Uh, thank you. This is also a contractual obligation. No further discussion.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. On the motion for adoption, all those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further communications from the mayor.
We have a resolution recognizing and commending the response of public safety personnel working to address the ongoing brush fires in Salem.
Counselor Prozinski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Whereas on the evening of October 26th, 2024, the Salem Fire Department was alerted to smoke in the wooded area behind Walmart in between Spring Pond and Highland Avenue. Crews responded that night and into Sunday evening to what ultimately was a 172-acre fire. And whereas on the morning of October 29th, 2024, the Salem Fire Department was alerted to a second fire originating in the Salem Woods behind Farrell Court on the opposite of Highland Avenue, crews again responded to what was ultimately a 14-acre fire. And whereas on October 30th, the Salem Fire Department reported that both brush fires in Salem were contained. And whereas the Salem Fire Department personnel, numerous other first responders have been working diligently and courageously since the initial reports to contain and address these fires, including extinguishing new flare-ups that have occurred periodically. And whereas the response of these personnel and departments has helped protect property and the lives during an extremely hazardous situation, now therefore be it resolved that the City of Salem recognizes the members of the Salem Fire Department and other responding fire departments for their courageous work in response to these fires, including personnel from communities of Acton, Eyre, Belmont, Beverly, Elrica, Boxborough, Burlington, Carlisle, Concord, Devens, Dunstable, Framingham, Gloucester, Groton, Groveland, Havrell, Lexington, Lincoln, Littleton, Lowell, Lynn, Manchester, Marblehead, Maynard, Medford, Milford, Northborough, Peabody, Pepperell, Sogus, Sherborne, Shrewsbury, Southborough, Stowe, Sudbury, Tingsborough, Westford, and Weston, and the Bureau of Forestry, Fire Control of the Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation. And be it further resolved that the City of Salem also recognizes the members of the Salem Police Department, the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, the Massachusetts National Guard, Air Wing, the Everett Police Department, Cataldo, Atlantic Ambulance, and the Massachusetts Department of Fire Services for their critical support and the insistence that the, and that a copy of this resolution be sent by the city clerk to the above departments and agencies as an extension of the City of Salem's gratitude for the service to our community. And I move that this be adopted by roll call vote.
Counselor Prozinski moves for adoption by roll call vote. Under discussion.
I don't think that it's, um, an underestimate to say that these heroes, um, successfully protected the lives and property of Salem and by the numerous amounts of agencies that everybody contributed to make sure that there were no lives lost and, uh, no significant property lost is a, is a testament to, uh, what these people do day and night. I know that while we slept in our houses, they were fighting fires day and night and day and night. And, um, they are my heroes, and, um, I think that, um, I think that we all are grateful for everything they've done. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. On the motion for adoption by roll call vote, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Harvey?
Yes.
Counselor Jerslow?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor Mercilow?
Yes.
Counselor Prozinski?
Yes.
Counselor Stark?
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
Counselor Watsonfelt?
Yes.
And Counselor Hapworth?
Yes.
On a resolution recognizing and commending the response of public safety personnel working to address the ongoing brush fires in Salem, we have 11 counselors voting, 11 in favor, none opposed, matter carries. Further communications from the mayor.
We have a resolution affirming the rights of children and declaring Salem a child and youth rights-respecting community.
Counselor Varela.
Whereas children are recognized as the future of our city, state, and nation, and whereas it is important that the physical, social, mental, and educational well-being needs of our youngest residents are met, and whereas there has been a worldwide recognition on the rights of children over a quarter century in the form of the United Nations Convention on the Rights of the Child, which most endorsed Human Rights Treaty in the history of the world, and whereas the Salem is a community that respects the rights and needs of all community members regardless of race, ethnicity, culture, religion, ability, and gender, and whereas many community service have, services have been put in place by the City of Salem to ensure that the children, the youth of our community have adequate care, safety, protection, including but not limited to City Connects, the Children's Cabinet, the Salem Youth Commission, the Salem Children's Alliance, and whereas the City of Salem and our community celebrate many positive contributions that young people make to our city and are committed to supporting them, respecting their voice, and helping them succeed in life. And whereas November 20th is celebrated in Salem and around the globe as World Children's Day, marking the 65th anniversary of adoption and Declaration of Rights of the Child by the United Nations General Assembly, and now therefore it may be resolved that the City of Salem affirms that the United Nations Convention on the Rights of the Child upon its 35th anniversary, and be it further resolved that the City of Salem is proud to reaffirm that it is a, that it is a child and youth rights-respecting community and the first declared in 2014 on the 25th anniversary of the convention, and the mayor and the City Council of Salem encourage all community to help advocate for rights and physical, social, mental, and educational well-being of all Salem's children and youth. And I move for adoption by roll call vote.
Counselor Varela moves for adoption by roll call vote. Under discussion?
No discussion.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. On the motion for adoption by roll call vote, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen? Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Harvey?
Yes.
Counselor Jerslow?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor Mercilow?
Yes.
Counselor Prozinski?
Yes.
Counselor Stark?
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
Counselor Watsonfelt?
Yes.
And Counselor Hapworth?
Yes.
Resolution affirming the rights of children and declaring Salem a child and youth rights, um, respecting community. We have 11 counselors voting, 11 in favor, none opposed, matter carries. Further communications from the mayor.
We have an order that we call "Pies for Fees."
Counselor Cohen.
I move for adoption.
Counselor Cohen moves for adoption. Under discussion.
Uh, thank you, President Hapworth. Uh, this has been in effect for several years. Uh, it might be especially timely this year where there was a lot of confusion in some of the parking, and people got, um, you know, parking tickets, uh, when they didn't expect it. So, basically what this is, is, uh, people can bring a couple of cans, uh, of, uh, vegetables or whatever into the collector's office, and they can wave up to $30.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. On the...
In late fees. Sorry.
In late fees. Um, on the motion for adoption, all those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Uh, further communications from the mayor.
We have an order that parking at all city-owned lots, garages, and on-street spaces shall be free of charge on the following days. Friday, November 29th, Saturday, November 30th, Sunday, December 1st, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday, December 21st, 22nd, 23rd, and 24th.
Counselor Cohen.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move for adoption.
Counselor Cohen moves for adoption. Under discussion.
Uh, thank you, President. Uh, this is something we've done for the last couple of years, and, uh, it's really a terrific, uh, program. Uh, maybe encourage some, uh, small business shopping, and don't take my spot.
Motion for adoption. All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Air's informational page, none. Motions, orders, and resolutions. Counselor Davis.
Thank you, President Hapworth. Resolution, the Salem City Council affirming support for our most vulnerable residents. Whereas the Salem City Council stands firmly in support of protecting all vulnerable residents, including women, LGBTQ-plus individuals, immigrants, and racial and ethnic minorities, especially when national rhetoric or policies threaten to marginalize them, and whereas harmful remarks and divisive rhetoric from any source can contribute to a climate of fear and discrimination, particularly affecting LGBTQ-plus youth and other marginalized groups, such statements perpetuate stereotypes that undermine Salem's values of inclusion, respect, and equality. And whereas every Salem resident deserves the freedom to express themselves and participate fully in life without fear of discrimination, we, the Salem City Council, remain dedicated to fostering an inclusive, welcoming environment for all residents regardless of gender identity, sexual orientation, race, ethnicity, immigration status, or background. And now therefore be it resolved that the Salem City Council unequivocally reaffirms its commitment to protecting all residents, pledging to stand as a beacon of inclusivity and fairness, supporting a future where every Salemite is treated with dignity and respect regardless of national rhetoric, and I move for adoption by roll call vote.
Counselor Davis moves for adoption by roll call vote. Under discussion.
Thank you, President Hapworth. Um, this is a really scary time right now to be trans, to be queer. There's a lot of pain and fear in the community. Um, I've been reached out to by countless residents, whether they are publicly identifying as trans or not, about, um, their concerns about losing their right to health care, their right to gender-affirming care, um, their ability to serve as teachers and service members while living as their authentic selves, um, and their general safety, um, given the results of the election. And, and yes, the, uh, comments from our congressman certainly didn't help. He's, uh, double down, triple down, quadruple down, and, and really hateful rhetoric. Um, so I think it's really important that we, as a body, are able to pass this resolution and reaffirm our support for the trans community and, and really reject any rhetoric that seeks to fear monger, scapegoat, or, or in any way communicate to our LGBTQ-plus residents that they are not welcome, uh, in our community.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Merkel and then Counselor Watsonfelt.
Uh, yes, I wanted to offer that I appreciate this being in front of us tonight, uh, with all the worry and concern people have expressed recently, uh, concerns for them that I share. Uh, I'll get, I'll give one example of many that I've heard. A, a parent told me about how worried their child is, uh, because their best friend is transgender, and they're worried that their friend will have to leave the country. Uh, i- it's heartbreaking, you know, to think about children being this frightened. Communities, all of us are stronger when we love and support all our youth in living their lives authentically, and I hope to see this approved tonight. And again, um, thank you for bringing it in.
Counselor Watsonfelt.
Thank you, President Hapworth, and I share my thanks with, um, Counselor Davis as well for bringing this forward. I think it's important to, um, cover off a couple of issues tonight that are on my, my mind specifically. Um, one, that it is, in my mind, incredibly irresponsible for anyone who is an elected official who represents such a wide myriad of diverse, um, and, and beautiful constituents to, um, use any kind of divisive language or discriminatory language. I think we have a shared responsibility for the health and protection of their personal freedoms, the personal freedoms of the Constitution that are protected, that we all took a vow to defend. Um, there's an incredible lack of, of empathy in some of the conversations that are happening in the national scale, and... are happening in the national scale. And I am aside from having been, as I have sat here before and said multiple times, just absolutely do not understand and I am disgusted by that approach to how we serve. We are public servants, and how we serve humanity is not a game, and it is not shallow, and it is often very difficult, and requires a lot of courage. So first of all, I just, I think it is a really scary time for a lot of people. I think just about every marginalized community has been spoken about in detrimental way, in a harmful and violent way by this administration coming in in the new year. And so I think that this resolution is broad and all-encompassing for all of those people. But having been said, where we are here at home in Salem today is in personal reflection and as a body reflecting on the comments of our congressman that I personally do not want to give too much more air to, given the way that he has absolutely manipulated the media and used this to somehow center himself in a way for whatever his reasons are. I'm not even going to speculate. So I just think that it lacks empathy and it lacks, it requires addressing by this body. And with regards to our trans community specifically, I'm going to look directly at the camera and deliver this. While I am in this chair, I am protecting you, and you have my backing. And I'm sorry that this is the world in which you live, and trans rights are human rights, and that is unequivocal in my mind. Another issue that has been brought to the forefront in this... Trying not to qualify the comments with some words I don't want to regret later. These comments that have been made is also just the fact that it has to be stated that this is a fallacy. This is not an issue. Our trans youth, whether or not they are participating in sports particularly, is not an issue. First of all, the percentage of children that are participating in youth sports as openly trans individuals is minuscule at best. Second of all, to placate to such a vacuous perspective throws in the face scientific reality that even within cisgendered identities, there is a wide range of physical size and strength and athletic prowess that are all shown on any athletic field. And I can give you a multitude of examples from this year's youth soccer in Salem experience and club soccer experience, which my son has participated in. You know, it is, this is, our children are up against other athletes all the time that vary in size and scale and strength. This is a joke? It's not an issue. I'm absolutely not entertaining it in my own personal engagement beyond tonight's conversation. And to leverage such a red herring, a political red herring, in such a way that harms children and harms our community and causes pain is irresponsible at best and hugely problematic and potentially dangerous at worst. So with that, I throw my full support behind this resolution that we protect all of our residents and their personal freedoms to the best of our ability. And I am especially keeping an eye on our trans community at this really difficult time. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor Cohen.
I want to express my support for the resolution, and I believe in the goals it aims to achieve. However, I have some concerns about the use of the term "national rhetoric" within the resolution. I feel it'd introduce a political angle that could distract from our community's core values and goals. I believe our focus should remain on what directly serves our community and upholds our shared values. If possible, I'd like to suggest we consider alternative language that keeps the emphasis on unity and our shared purpose without introducing divisive or politicized terminology.
Is that a motion, Counselor Jurslow?
Yes, I'd like to take "national rhetoric." I'd like to make a motion to take the words "national rhetoric" out of the resolution.
Do I see a second? Seeing none. Counselor Morse, then Counselor Cohen.
Thank you, President Hapworth. So although I am going to move to adopt this resolution, I am concerned about its language. I do agree with Mr. Mollstrom that if we wanted to be specific about something that happened, we should be specific in our language. You know, this resolution has a lot of different components to it. It includes women, immigrants. You know, I don't want to see people violently deported or separated from their families, for example. I don't want people to be hurt because of their race or ethnicity. And, you know, I have made a personal statement in my social media, and I'm a member of Project Out, the board of Project Out, and I went to the congressman's office and expressed my views. I do want to mention a couple of things. And one is that this ironically is, started yesterday, the Transgender Awareness Week. It's from the 13th to the 19th. Nagley is going to have an event for Trans Day of Remembrance, which is on the 20th from 7:00 to 9:00, where typically people from the community read the names of people who have passed, who are trans, non-binary. And I will say this, I just feel like a statement without specificity is just a statement. What's really important to me is that in our society, we don't make those who are already vulnerable more vulnerable. Thank you.
Counselor Proznyuski, then Counselor Stott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Salem has always been probably one of the most inclusive, safe cities in the Commonwealth to live in. People come here because we've been the leaders for our views towards discriminatory and inequity in values. We were recognized by the ADL years ago as being an example of what other city communities can look at to follow our programs and our initiatives to fight discrimination and to have equity and inclusiveness for all in this city. Anybody that's grown up in this city knows that we've been a melting pot, and we've been a melting pot for years. Our community is in good shape. Our community does not discriminate. Our community is welcoming. And I think that that's the message that I think everybody should get, is that yes, I agree with the resolution, but this is an ongoing battle that Salem has fought for years and years and years, probably since the witchcraft trials. And we will continue to be inclusive. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Stott.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I'll be brief. I just wanted to say that I support this resolution. We've created kind of joint statements before, statements of support as a body here in council. While I agree with other comments here that I don't think it's perfect, I think we definitely could have added the specific call out to our congressman Moulton, and we wouldn't have this in front of us if those remarks were not made. And I think it's perfectly acceptable to call that out. I want to say I appreciate the comments from my fellow counselors, especially those sharing their support and their affirmation and standing firmly in support of our community members. I'd like to thank Counselor Cohen for calling out Trans Remembrance Day and Nagley's upcoming event. I do feel that with resolutions, it's always, what is the action here, which is hard for resolution? And having some sort of action, like let's throw our support behind Nagley, or how as a community can we come together? Because yes, we do have a history, and Salem is an inclusive, welcoming community, but there are members within our community that are participating in this rhetoric, which is why we have this resolution in front of us this evening. So we are not perfect, but we, as a council, can stand together and say that we will support our most vulnerable residents, which I can easily say tonight.
Any further discussion? Seeing none on the motion for adoption by roll call vote. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Cohen.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Harvey.
Yes.
Counselor Jurslow.
Yes.
Counselor Merkel.
Yes.
Counselor Mercilow.
Yes.
Counselor Proznyuski.
Yes.
Counselor Stott.
Yes.
Counselor Varela.
Yes.
Counselor Watsonfelt.
Yes.
And Counselor Hapworth.
On the resolution, the Salem City Council offering support to our most vulnerable residents. We have 11 counselors voting, 11 in favor, none opposed, matter carries. Further motions, orders, and resolutions. Counselor Watsonfelt.
Thank you, Counselor Hapworth. An ordinance relative to traffic, be it ordained by the city council of the City of Salem as follows. Section 1, Section 57A of Article 5, be amended by repealing the following. Arbella Street, parking time limited, unmetered zone, southerly side, beginning at 1.20 feet from the corner of Bridge Street and proceeding easterly for 54 feet, 15-minute parking, Monday through Saturday, 8 to 6, Sunday, 12 to 6 p.m. And inserting the following. Arbella Street, parking time limited, unmetered zone, southerly side, beginning at 1.20 feet from the corner of Bridge Street and proceeding easterly for 54 feet, 15-minute parking, daily 7 a.m. to 11 p.m. Section 2, that this ordinance shall take effect as provided by city charter. And I move for adoption for first passage.
Counselor Watsonfelt moves for adoption for first passage. Any discussion?
Thank you, President Hapworth. Yeah, this is just a simple updating of the timing that this parking is available, so that the time available matches the time that the store there is open, that the business that it supports is open. So hopefully, no questions, but happy to entertain them if people have them. Thanks.
Any further discussion? Seeing none on the motion for adoption for first passage. All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further motions, orders, and resolutions. Counselor Jurslow.
Thank you, President Hapworth. Be it ordained by the city council...
Waive the reading. Counselor Varela moves to waive the reading. See no objection. Counselor Jurslow.
The first section...
Want to just let us know what the motion is first?
I move for adoption of first passage.
Counselor Jurslow moves for adoption for first passage. Under discussion?
The first section, Section 1, it repeals old ordinance language that has not been in effect for many years. And Section 3, or Section 4, reflects new layout of recent roadway upgrades.
Any further discussion? Seeing none on the motion for adoption for first passage. All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further motions, orders, and resolutions. Counselor Stott.
City of Salem, November 14.
There you go. That was quick.
I tried to go fast.
They're together here.
I move for adoption for first passage.
Counselor Stott moves for adoption for first passage. Under discussion?
Thank you, President Hapworth. So these are two traffic ordinances together that we're moving for first passage of both, and they are similar to Counselor Jurslow's items, kind of right-size and correct. A few items that are happening along Franklin Street, they have been signed as such and just not in the book. We are adding one accessible parking zone for the park. For Furlong Park, there's no accessible parking, but just this past fall, we got a lovely new sidewalk with an acceptable entrance. So we are marking an accessible spot by that entrance. We also had some lovely crosswalks at it, and parking spaces added on in particular, kind of marked out with lines. So this puts all of that work that was just done and the signs that have been in place for a few years into city ordinance. And the second one is a, oh, yeah, and the second one is an accessible parking spot on Dearborn Street at request of the resident, and the backup documentation from Lieutenant Tucker is in our backup material.
Any further discussion? Seeing none on the motion for adoption for first passage. All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. These second passages will all be on our last meeting of the year, which is wild. Further motions, orders, and resolutions. Waive the reading. Counselor Varela went back in time to... Counselor Varela waves the reading. Seeing no objection. Counselor Mercilow.
Thank you, President. The first one is about the very lovely intersection of Jefferson and Wilson.
Want to let us know what the motion is?
Motion for approval.
Counselor Mercilow moves for adoption for first passage.
Option for first passage. That, too.
Now under discussion.
Okay, so the first one is the intersection of Wilson and Jefferson, where there is going to be a brand-new light sometime right now. Next week, they're going to do the repaving of that intersection, and then they will add the paint, and then hopefully the light will be in. So the first two refer to the fact that there will be no red on red at that light on the Jefferson outside, because that would interfere with the flow of traffic and create the issues that we have right now, where there's not enough room to turn. So the new paint for that intersection will push the stop line back behind the crosswalk. So it should be clear for people taking a right-hand turn from Wilson to Jefferson. And then the other parts of that particular order have to do with removing parking on the approaches to the light to allow more room for the cars, basically. And then the second one is an accessible spot, and again, the backup materials from Lieutenant Tucker are in the backup.
Any further discussion? Seeing none on the motion for adoption for first passage. All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further motions, orders, and resolutions. Counselor Cohen.
I move for adoption. First passage for three ordinance.
We'll say the way we...
The reading was waived. Counselor Cohen moves for adoption for first passage.
Hang on a second. Yeah, it's weird.
We're going to do this one together.
It's supposed to, okay.
Supposed to be, Mr. Cohen.
So we are on page 22. Counselor Cohen moves for adoption for first passage. Under discussion?
Okay. Ordinance number one, there's a resident who, although the building has a driveway, it's already been allocated to other residents without a handicap spot available near the house. This resident could not negotiate her way into the building and approved by Lieutenant Tucker. The second one, over the summer, we actually dealt with Naples, and Naples and Savoy actually have the same signage, the same issues. And just like we did with Naples, we, the Transportation Department sent out a inquiry to all the people who reside on Hemingway and Savoy to make sure that we should do the same thing, which is to pass an ordinance that reflects the signs, the signs that exist, for Savoy and Hemingway. And Broadway is the last one, and even though it's not a big street, there's a lot of unique things. The fire department borders it, and they need to park vehicles. There's some very small businesses. There's also a little stretch where there's a driveway from Salem State that we need to have a tow zone, and this is just going to make it easier when they finish the road repairs and the sidewalks on Broadway.
Any further discussion? Seeing none on the motion for adoption for first passage. All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Counselor Proznyuski.
Further committee reports. Counselor Hapworth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Committee of the Whole, in city council, November 14, 2024, the Committee of the Whole, to whom is referred a matter, meeting with Superintendent Dr. Stevens-Rike on the state of the school department, has considered said matter and would move that this be received and filed.
All those in favor of accepting the report? Counselor Hapworth.
On the motion, the superintendent came in and spoke to the City, to the Committee of the Whole earlier this week and just sort of talked through the state of the schools and went through a lot of the goals and the measurables and where they were at versus those goals. It was a really good, comprehensive review of where they stand. I think, for me, it was an eye-opener just to see, to see again in sort of clear language, the value... the values of the School Department, what they stand for, and then, and then the progress that they've made over the last year or so. It's clear that they've made a lot of great progress, that things are heading in the right direction in a lot of ways, and I think his transparency and his openness to have those discussions with us was much appreciated.
Any further discussion? Counselor Stott.
Thank you, President Prozinski. I very much appreciate Dr. Schreick's presentation that he provided to the council with a lot of data-driven information, along with the details around his goals and measurable actions that he's taken on some things that are kind of hard to have a measurable action on, but he's figured out how to do it, especially with the focus that the schools, the school committee, the superintendent, that the community has on ensuring the mental health of our students, the counseling, all of the culture aspects that were discussed. It's just, it's impressive, and it was, it's really, I highly, highly encourage anyone that has questions about our schools to meet with Superintendent Schreick, attend a school committee meeting, ask your questions that you have. Schools always have open info sessions, I believe in February or so during the kindergarten open enrollment, but definitely ask the questions and learn about this amazing public school system that we have. But the one other piece that I wanted to mention is that the, kind of the two big topics that are really in focus right now, I think Counselor Murcillo asked a great question of what keeps you up at night, and budget is going to be a very big concern and point of conversation upcoming for the schools, as well as we have a really exciting project with the High School Building Committee going on right now. I've been lucky to be a part of that committee for about a year and a half, almost two years now, and it's been a conversation that has been going on as a community for years. They were listening sessions back in 2020 led by Canon Design, and now here we are entering 2025 with a designer selected, a project manager selected, and really ready to move forward and make those decisions needed on what the future of the high school building will be. And I wanted to note that the next, those meetings are totally open to the public, they're available on YouTube. The next meeting is November 21st. They're held at the Salem High School, which is great to go in there and see the facility that we have now. Those are at 6 o'clock, and we also have some upcoming public listening or public conversation sessions around the future of our schools, because this new building will have a lot of kind of trickle-down effects within how, you know, what will the building look like? Who will it house? How will it affect the rest of the building community within the schools? So now is the time to get involved. Now is the time to attend the meetings, listen, and provide your input. But I appreciate Dr. Schreick and his presentation every year. Always my favorite.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. On Counselor Hapworth's motion for the adoption of the report, all those in favor? All those opposed? Matter carries.
It's submitted by Jane Guy, Assistant Community Development Director, and Patricia Calhoun, Preservation Planner, a Preservation Restriction Agreement between Essex National Commissioning, owner of Baker's Island Light Station, Baker's Island DBA Essex Heritage, and the City of Salem for the Oil House, which is being executed as condition of the CPA funding.
Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move for adoption.
Counselor Merkel moves for adoption. Under discussion.
Thank you. I spoke with Jane Guy about this, and for some information on it, when Community Preservation Act funding goes towards a non-public entity, a preservation restriction agreement is required. And this was for a $7,000 approval of CPA funding. It was approved by the council a while ago, and it requires this agreement. It's for the Baker's Island Oil House, and in the backup documentation, which there is 29 pages of it, there is a picture of the Stone Oil House on page 108 that will be worked on. And the purpose of these is you have to have a public benefit for use of CPA funds, and it guarantees it remains unchanged as well. So, thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor Watsonfeld.
Thank you. I just want to take a minute to commend the National Heritage Commission for all the work that they do in preservation and bringing attention to preservation in our community all across Essex County. The particular work that they've done on Baker's Island is really beautiful, and it is open and available. They do do tours. I definitely encourage folks to, to look into the, to the organization and into the work that they're doing on Baker's Island. And if you are a history buff like I am, definitely look into the work and the events of the National Heritage Commission. It was where I had my very first job ever, which is maybe a bias of mine, but I do think that the work, they're, they're kind of a quiet organization, but it deserves, they deserve commendation for the work they've done. So, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none on the motion for adoption. All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Here, petitions.
A petition from National Grid to install conduits on Union Street for a property at 13 Hawthorne Boulevard.
Hearing order, December 5th, 2024. Further petitions.
We have a petition from Del Brook JKS to work on a list of holidays at the 266 Canal Street project.
Hearing order, December 5th, 2024. Further petitions.
We petition from Dan Robitelli of 39 Crowder Street to discuss the condition of his front yard due to flooding and what the City of Salem has done to help.
Counselor Harvey.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move this be referred to government services.
Counselor Harvey moves to refer to government services. Any discussion?
No discussion.
On the motion to refer to government services, all those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further petitions.
We request from Wicket Running Club to hold a road race, Wicket Frosty 4, in New City Streets on January 1st, 2025.
Counselor Jerslow.
Thank you, President Hapworth. I move that this be granted.
Counselor Jerslow moves to be granted. Any discussion?
This is a really good race, as long as it's not a snowstorm. I think we do a really good job with it.
Agreed. Any further discussion? Seeing none on the motion to be granted. All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further petitions.
We have two public guides.
Counselor Murcillo.
I move that these be granted.
Counselor Murcillo moves to be granted. All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Further petitions.
We have seven claims.
Counselor Murcillo.
Thank you, President. I move that these be referred to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs.
Counselor Murcillo moves to refer to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs. All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Finished business? None. Counselor Prozinski.
Move to adjourn.
Counselor Prozinski moves for adjournment. All those in favor? I'm sorry.
Counselor Murcillo. Thank you. I just wanted to take a minute to thank City Clerk and her department for running a flawless election again this year. It's a lot of work. It's a lot of work, and we appreciate the work. And then I wanted to, you skipped over the, well, anyways, I wanted to also point out something that I learned during the fire, and that is the use of the drone, which we had some discussion on in this council when, when we authorized the purchase of them. And I know that we heard from some people that were a little worried about the use of a drone and what it could be used for, and I was, I had a really interesting meetup with one of the police officers, whose name is escaping me now, who does the taxi licenses.
Dennis Goddard.
Tronkowski, Tronkowski. Sorry, sorry. I apologize.
Robertson Troncoso.
Troncoso, thank you. Troncoso, jeez. Anyways, he was up there when I went up to, when the fire was happening off of First Street, and, and I saw him in the parking lot at Peacock Highlands, and so I went over, and he was using the drone to do two things. He was using it to check to see if there was anyone in the woods and to make sure that they got out. And then the second one, second thing he was doing was he was watching the fire and how it was moving. And right before I had gotten up there, he noticed that the fire was coming close to the cloisters. They were pushing it back towards the golf course, but the fire was moving forward to the, to the cloisters. So it allowed them to quickly pick up everything that they were doing at the golf course and move the control over to First Street. And then they, you know, they did what they, what they do well and professionally and pushed the fire back. But I thought that that was a really interesting use. It did not come up during our discussion of the drones, but, you know, they used drones on the other side of Highland Avenue, too, at that fire, and it's, these are important tools that, that we authorize through the City Council, and I think that, you know, the public needs to know more about this stuff and how it's used and how it's used professionally and the training they have to get and the hours of, of training and testing that they put in. He had to take that down, though, because of the news helicopters that showed up, which is really a shame, and so that could probably use a little more discussion in the future. But you have to be very careful with the drones up in the air when there's aircraft around. But, you know, I, the petition, the resolution we had in commendation of all of the fire departments that helped with those fires, this was, it's still going on, and it was a lot of work, and there were a lot of residents up there at both fires who were rightly concerned. I mean, it was right, right there at the cloisters and, and the Whalers Lane condos there. It was right there. The fire department was so professional, though, and they, they gave them all sorts of information, and so the residents felt safe, and that was the reason why I was up there. I wanted to just kind of walk around and check in with people, and, and they were fine. They were getting the information that they needed. But anyways, I thought the drones were an interesting, an interesting thing. So, that's it. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor Harvey.
If I can just, excuse me, if I can just add to what Counselor Murcillo was just saying about the drones, the, not only just pictures, but the technology that was in the drone, because I was up behind Highland condominiums on Sunday, and the drone was actually infrared and could tell how, what the temperature of the ground was and how, the way the fire was getting ready to move, or if it was going to flare up again, and it gives the fire department the advantage to try to get ahead of it a little bit. It was, it was very, very interesting. I agree with the, some people have concerns about drones. I mean, I was down in Aruba, and there was a guy with a drone, just flying his drone around the beach. That's not what they use for. The, the technology that goes into those things is unbelievable at this point. I just want to get, jump in that one.
Further discussion? Seeing none. Counselor Prozinski.
Move to adjourn.
He moves to adjourn again. All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Thank you all.
Jeff.